I think so.
I just want to be sure somebody was sliding the door and I knew y'all would man. So, good afternoon to everybody. We're here for our city council work session this afternoon. And we're very excited that we have a, uh, some great stuff on our agenda for this meeting. And so I'm calling this meeting in order. And we're going to begin with our first person, which is a legislative update. Mr. Ted Riley of Riley Pope and Lenny. I was trying to introduce him as if I didn't know him. I wanted to make it feel good.
Thank you. And we have the PowerPoint. I can drive.
Okay.
That's good. Well, thank y'all for having us. I want to introduce Tara Boone, which I know all of you guys see her emails about daily from articles to.
Oh, yeah, we want you to know she's the only one that we worry when she's not there. I suppose you understand that. Oh, yeah, she's not there.
I'm gonna have her present in a minute.
Okay.
But we appreciate it and thanks again for allowing us to represent the great city of Greenville in crazy Columbia. We enjoy it and we're very happy that they are not in session at this time, even though they continue to come back. As you know, they came back a few times after they adjourned to deal with the budget. So it took us through June and now they're coming back in the next two weeks, the House and the Senate, to deal with the abortion issue. So they never seem to actually leave and we get a breather, but that's beside the point. I'd like to start with kind of the last session and what occurred that could impact the city of Greenville. This was the second year of a two-year session. So everything that died on the vine is, would have to be reintroduced. And we start with a clean slate in 23. So some of the bad, bad stuff we were fighting for two years and hoping it wouldn't move is now DOA and we, we start over in 23. And you're gonna see a lot of that reintroduced according to what I'm hearing. And we'll, we'll get to that also. I put a list of budget items that I thought related, related to municipalities and possibly directly to, to us that I want you guys to be aware of. I'm sure you are of most of these, but I wanted to share those with you. I'm not going to read each one of these budget items, but I'd like you to review them. And if you have questions or looking for a state agency to, to see where these funds are going or how we could possibly approach an agency, I want to be there for you to, to see what I can do to help. So look at, look at those. You know, we passed almost a $2 billion tax cut with this budget. We have the billion-dollar taxpayer rebate, which I think they, they're going to send a max of up to $700 to a refund by December 31st of 2022 is the schedule from Department of Revenue. And then we had about 712.8 million of recurring dollars that were involved there. Other items on there, if you have any questions as we go through, please, please ask and I'll be glad to try to respond or get you information as we go forward.
Ted, I have one. The Conisty Dam Emergency Mitigation Project.
Yes.
How much of the mitigation does that take care of? Does that?
The total amount they were looking for, no, it's not.
It's designed.
Seed funding to continue the discussion. We actually had a meeting on that last week. I'll give you an update on that. But I, I think we've heard everything from 30 to 60 million dollars.
Yeah, that's my thought.
So it's a, I mean, it's a big ticket.
I think there was a, a cheap repair was whatever 12 to 15 million. And then the total redo was 30, up in the 30s.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, we were.
That, that's.
We were asked, asked, asked to engage on that. And I got John, Mr. McDonough to attend a coalition meeting on that. And Bob Knight did a great job working to make this an emergency de-hack issue and not a county or city issue. And that's really how we got that seed money. But we, we supported Bob in his efforts and John was engaged with the powers that be to fight for that funding. So it's a start.
Right, thank you.
It's not all they need.
On that topic, Ted, and this might be something Clint has to ask, or Matt actually, do, do we have grant requests in on the B, on the BIL for something on Conisty? No, why I can't make words tonight?
Well, the dam is.
Bipartisan structure bill.
No, ma'am, we do not. We have a, we have an appropriation request in for the Army Corps of Engineers to do a feasibility study for the repair, but we don't have anything in under the infrastructure law.
Okay.
And our previous attorney told us that we have no, we have no liability in the dam.
That was my understanding or limited to, sort of a county issue if I understand.
Ted, what does, um, is that on the dam? Did you have any more on the dam? The dam is done. 12.5 million added to the base local government fund. What does that mean for us?
Well, you know, they came up with a new formula that if the economy grew by a certain percentage, then the local government fund would be funded at a certain percentage. And that is that extra amount that was, was placed in the local government fund for the year. So it's, it was a positive number. We don't get as much, of course, as the county. We always support it and fight for the local government fund to make sure it's fully funded.
Okay. But would you call that above and beyond what we've seen in the past year?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's new money.
Gotcha.
And it won't, it'll continue that way as long as the economy grows by, I think it's 5%. And it's tied to that. So it's more, we used to be the front end of the budget and the general assembly kind of flipped it to the back end from the economic standpoint of where, where we are.
And I think we got some, and Clint, this is, you can help me out here too. I think we got some, the CTC fund, the County Transportation Fund got a huge chunk this year. And I, being newer on council, I'm intrigued as to how that, some of that will make its way to Little Greenville City.
Yeah, they got, I think, 15 million in one-time funds. I think they have a balance around 18 million in CTC funds. We actually are discussing with them some additional funds for our pavement management program, which we'll be talking about here.
So it's basically, basically the, y'all have conversations then with them and work with their engineer? Okay.
All right, that's some budget items to review. There we go. And we talked about the 1087 was the bill that passed with the billion-dollar tax cut. And you can see some of the other points in there, the, the reduction of the top income tax rate from seven to 6.5. It is tied to economic growth though, which is probably smart as we'll probably be broke again in three years that we, as we spend all this money. But that's just cyclical. And an immediate reduction in the manufacturing property tax from nine to 6%. And it, they, they ensure that the local governments were made whole for the lost revenue in that reduction. I hope that's accurate. Y'all could educate me to that.
That's accurate, yeah.
Explain what that.
Yeah. So the, the South Carolina manufacturing property tax was at 1.10%, 5%. It was lowered to 9%. And then in this, a couple of years ago, and then in this bill is lowered to 6%. But in doing so, particularly the counties could potentially lose money on that reduction to 6%. So what the legislature has said is if there's money's lost, which is expected, then the legislature will make whole to the counties what they would lose due to the reduction in the property tax from 9% to 6% with literally general appropriations. I'm looking at Merle over there to make sure that is right. Yes. But actually, the 6% reduction, we could take advantage of that. Not in terms of putting manufacturers here, but in terms of what we've been talking about, the, the office and the R and D and, and other areas that we can capitalize on advanced manufacturing.
See Ted, this is the problem you have when you have another lobbyist.
Sorry.
Very helpful.
I'll be quiet.
Very helpful. No, no, no. This, I want this to be interactive, so that's why we're here.
He's on our team, so.
Yeah. We threw in some major changes because it is, as Mr. Dworkin knows, the Senate, we rarely have changes.
That's the first time you've ever called me Mr. Anything, by the way.
What's that?
That's the first time you've, you've ever, you've ever called me Mr. Anything.
Oh, that's true. Trying to be professional. And we know with the passing of Senator Leatherman, Chairman Leatherman, Harvey Peeler, who's, you know, similar to Fritz, Fritz Hollins to Strom Thurmond, was the junior, junior senator for 25 years. And now he's chairman of Senate Finance. And it's, you know, similar staff. It seems to be running similarly to me. They opened door to, to most of them and a lot of really good staff still. Tom Alexander became the Senate President. So that was, was big news. Then y'all know Jay Lucas, the Speaker of the House resigned and Merrill Smith became the new speaker. So we got a lot of big changes there. And Davy Hyatt from Pickens became the new House Majority Leader. Really good people to work with and we have good relationships with those folks going forward. Major initiatives achieving passage, we just tried to pick some of these out. And you guys may want to bring up some others. You're welcome to and see if I can comment on them. But the housing tax credit bill, we've worked with the Greenville Housing Authority and Greenville Affordable Housing Coalition, Brian Brown and Tina specifically. We, John, you know, we had them speak. And this, this, you know, we passed the 4% state tax credit and it was a lot of pent-up demand for affordable housing. And everybody jumped on this and it totally freaked out leadership when they saw the fiscal impact. I think the state housing told them the fiscal impact would be like 2.5 million and it's, it's taken off. So they totally kind of in panic mode, said, we, we got to address this. This is out of control. So that's where 575 came with a cap, a $20 million cap to start. We advocated for a higher cap. They were locked in at 15 million and we did get it increased to 20 million. And it's not just us, it's a huge coalition of developers and housing folks, but trying to explain to them what you're investing in and that 4% and how many jobs it can mean. But it's, anyway, they were, they were locked in on, on changing this format. And now it's centralized through Joint Bond Review and the SFAA, which is made up of leadership to, to, to spend these dollars in the, in the future. I understand they're meeting tomorrow. Joint Bond Review meets tomorrow and SFAA next week. They had $100 million, I think, carry forward that our Greenville folks have informed me that they think it takes care of the projects in the pipeline. But we're going to wait in, in the staff. Rick Harmon is a staffer. He promised me that he thought all of those projects would be covered and we'd learn tomorrow of that, which will be a big deal. If not, but there's a lot of people still advocating and would like some changes to the administrative deals that, that Rick Harmon has put into place, particularly the bonding, allowing the bonding, locals to do the bonding. Now it has to run through the state housing and that's, that's got a lot of angst in people talking to Bo Campbell, the attorney and people above my pay grade when it comes to affordable housing legal. Anyway, we'll see how that ends up tomorrow, but it may be, and we've committed to working with Brian and Tina. They want to do site visits, try to bring some of these SFAA members, Peeler, Satchler, some of the other ones that were very involved, Merrill Smith, to some housing developments in their district and show them that here's what, you don't know what affordable, a lot of people have this stigma, you know, of what affordable housing is. And they want to show them what modern affordable housing is and see if we can start changing that mindset. And then you talk about the economic development behind it and how many jobs we're talking about. Anyway, it's, it's a big deal and a big issue. And we've been engaged on your behalf with that coalition of, of everybody.
Do you know if they've been shared so that they want to bring them here to see some of the work already done? I know of one project in particular that falls into that tomorrow is the decision that's, that's extremely important to us and has been, has taken a lot of work going towards it. Do you know if plans, you know, the renderings of that and the applications that got us to them have been shared for the ones that we have snagged in this pipeline?
I deferred to Brian Brown and Tina and your housing execs. And that was their understanding that if current projects in the pipeline are going to be covered, once again, we'll learn more tomorrow. Otherwise, I think we'll hit a panic mode there according to what I'm hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. I know of one in the city for sure, but I want to know where.
Ted, is there the expectation that the $20 million minimum is going to be reevaluated?
Well, that's, we're starting that. They just rammed this bill through.
Yeah.
In kind of panic mode this session, despite a lot of testimony. We brought people, everybody from developers to housing, to everybody to talk about the, why you don't want to cap it that, that low. But yeah, I know some folks have met with Merrill Smith, the new speaker. He said, I'm open, if we get it right, opening up to raising the cap. So that was, but he said, you need to work on the Senate leadership. So that's where we talked about site visits and trying to bring some of them particularly over to, to educate them more about what we're talking about. Well, the American Rescue Plan Act was, of course, a big deal, a little bit of cash there. And you can see how they have allocated. I think important to us was the 900 million on the, for water sewer and stormwater infrastructure. And that is being run through the South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority. And I know they have 600 million remaining to spend. So that's something, Ms. Dow, we were talking about maybe targeting if it fits within the parameters of how it can be spent or allocated. But they're trying to focus on, as they call it, transformational projects that, that will change the state for the better and not, not individual projects by any means.
And Ted, there's $100 million to the $900 million, as you know, that's going toward, that Harry Lightsey's going to have control over.
That who?
Department of Commerce. He's going to have 100 million of the $900 million. And Merle, I just wonder if there's some opportunities for us, you don't have to answer, but I'm just suggesting there might be some opportunities with the $100 million for the, of the water and sewer that we might take a look and just see if there's something that would be, that would qualify us with that.
And that's at Commerce you're talking about or the?
Yeah, so the $900 million that went for water and sewer, 100 million.
100 billion, that's right.
100 million of it went, is, is going to be under, not RIA, but 100 million will go to Commerce.
So this is semantics thing and help educate me. I read, this is y'all's wheelhouse. So I read 900 million being spent, I get all excited, 900 million being spent on water sewer and stormwater infrastructure through competitive grants issued through the South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority.
Yeah.
An entity I wouldn't be too comfortable calling from the city of Greenville. But is that just coincidence or, you know, does that mean that 900 million minus the 100 million, so 800 million is earmarked for rural areas?
No, it, it's running through them, but I think if, if you go to that, their link, their website, it'll talk about the different grant levels and where the city of Greenville could possibly apply. And there are, there is opportunity for urban cities, not just rural. But was a big push, once again, they want it to be transformational and the, the water and sewer needs in some of these poor rural areas is so bad, they want to highlight and focus that with a big pot of that money.
But is applying for this, the 100 million versus the 800 million, all making up the 900 million, those are two entities, two different entities you're applying to with two different, you know, probably.
Yeah, I think the, I think the RIA is typically, is typically the agency through which a lot of these water and sewer grants run. So I think Bonnie, Bonnie says, already does it. Bonnie already does it regularly every year, correct?
But not with 900 million. That's kind of new. But they, yeah, they had an infrastructure in place, but no, I think there's clearly opportunity and we need to really study that. Go to that website would be my request to you to, to look at it or staff to look at it and tell me if we think there's an opportunity there and that may be something we can help work on also.
Where does that land, John? What, what department is that land in on writing those grants?
Which?
Yeah, yeah.
So Ted, that last sentence, the remaining 600 million will be allocated at a later date.
Yes.
Will that be in my lifetime or I'm counting on being around another?
I think it's something we can look at and see if it falls within the, the rules and parameters of ARB. I don't know, I don't know that off the top of my head. That's something to consider though. It's.
It's a lot of money.
And they have two years to allocate.
Yeah, they've got, they've got an allocated bias. I can't remember the date.
Okay, good.
26, December 26th, I can't remember.
To allocate, that doesn't mean spend.
That's right.
But allocate.
They have to allocate, but then it can be another year to spend it, is my understanding.
I don't know, here's Matt.
We do have offending RIA grant requests for a sewer project that we are working on for the October deadline.
Already on it.
He's on it.
I love Matt. H3050 became law at the end of session two and kind of went back and forth, the law enforcement reform bill. And I thought, of course, your, your law enforcement folks are probably on it and understand that the changes and revisions there. And MASK, the Municipal Association folks really took the lead on that bill and did a great job, I think, even though it was pretty compromised in the end and watered down, but they got some of the reforms through, is my understanding. So I just wanted to highlight that for, for you guys. Senate Bill 108, the early voting, Election Commission revisions. We, there was an amendment to that to eliminate municipal elections. And I heard from Ms. Camilla real quickly and we, and Shannon, we, anyway, we, we jumped on that to, to make sure that was not going to be a part of the final package and had a lot of people concerned, but that didn't make the, the final cut. So we, we survived.
Go ahead, Camilla, and lay it down.
Yeah. I knew she was serious. Anyway, initiatives failing to achieve passage. Once again, we just finished a two-year session, so they are DOA, but a lot of these we're going to see again, is my guess. Not the tree ordinance is my understanding, the, the peremption to your tree ordinance. My understanding is Conway, this was the city of Conway and they settled this, it's all been settled and it will not be reintroduced, has been my.
Our tree ordinance stands.
4060 is the building codes bill. We had people testify from Greenville over the two-year period of that bill hung out there and we agreed to compromise on the residential building codes cycle. We agreed to a five to six year to move it and kept commercial. It three was the final, the home builders were pushing, this was their number one priority on this bill. And in the end, it, we all agreed to a compromise and they went back over to Senator Alexander, then the chairman of LCI. And the home builders kind of reneged on their compromise agreement. And he said, okay, no hearing. So the whole bill died and they got nothing, but most likely it'll be reintroduced next year and we'll. Yeah, we already do, yes. But they want to extend the cycle to when we can even consider the next one, three to, that's residential, not commercial. So after a lot of aggressive lobbying and leadership pretty much telling us to work on a compromise, that's how we came to that. And then I thought it was done, but it died on the vine at the end of session. 4387 was introduced at the end of session, dealing with business license tax. You know, we spent 10 years working on a compromise and they, you know, got an agreement with all parties that had pushed for 10 years to. You know, we spent ten years working on a compromise and they, you know, got an agreement with all parties that had pushed for ten years to eliminate the business license tax. And then the chairman, the or sponsor of that bill introduces this bill. So we apparently aren't done with business license tax bills in the future. So we can expect probably more of that. Affordable for conclusionary zoning, y'all are familiar with that one. We've introduced it numerous times. It did come out of the House Three M Committee and died on the House floor. A lot of opposition, particularly the home builders, realtors, a lot of opposition. And we've tried to ask them to come to the table and talk about compromise, talk about things that will work and can work. So we need to continue to do that, or you guys with your relationships need to continue to work with the local realtors and home builders about how we can move forward there. Anyway, they're strong at attacking that bill every year. Five two eight, that's another home builders bill and a companion was introduced. What they call it, the South Carolina Home At Home Attainability Act. We called it the Home Builders Get Rich Act because it was it was not a good bill. Anyway, huge coalition had one hearing and it died in subcommittee, but they may reintroduce that bill. But it they had this sexy name, Home Attainability Act, and a lot of people without reading it signed on to it. And people like Representative Shandra Dillard read it and went to some of her brother brethren and said, have you read this bill? And they're like, no, it was, it sounded like it was going to help with affordable housing. She was like, oh, my God, read it. Anyway, then they took their names off as sponsors, but not a good bill and was unrealistic in the timeline. And our building codes people were highly against and testified against, I think, too, so. Preemption bills, as you know, they seem to be growing, getting more and more preempting what you can do regarding home rule. The tobacco preemption bill, they did compromise and exempted zoning from that bill, but it it died on the Senate floor the last day of session. I thought it was going to pass and they tried to set it for special order a few times. Anyway, that will come back big time. It won't have the zoning piece in it. So you can't regulate vape shops and things like that. So we'll win and if that's reintroduced, the lobbyist forum said was very upset that he died. He thought it was a done deal and he said they were going to come back with a vengeance. But Tara and I also represent the American Cancer Society and we were the ones fighting on the floor to try to kill it, so.
Hey, Ted, I know we're running a little bit short. Will we have time for a few questions, you think?
Yes. What? How much time do I have? I didn't pay attention. What's that?
Ten minutes.
I'll kind of I'll blow through the rest of this. Then let's let's ask, yes, or you want to ask a question now?
No, 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 I just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Rest of these you guys have seen, Harpoot Lee and introduced that because he's sick of drunk college kids in Five Points. He knew it wasn't going anywhere. He pretty much would have shut down all of your restaurants if they followed the law and Department of Revenue. Municipalities removing monuments never went anywhere reactionary bills. Once again, all these could come back. Sales tax exemptions. We've had these giant committees that met for a year to come up with lowering our sales tax from six percent to three to four percent. But they're going to expand it and hit services, et cetera, which could impact us. And Senator Sean Bennett and Josh Kimbrel at the end of session have dropped kind of a shell and and they're definitely serious about tax reform big time. And I think you will see Senator Bennett particularly taking the lead on tax reform. And what that means, I'm not sure yet. We'll have to see, but I can, we can expect that in the next session. Preview for twenty twenty three, and this is where I'd love to hear from you guys. It's great being here in August. We got time to prepare. If there's priorities we want to talk about. And the first one I've heard from some of you guys talking about annexation or the Donut Hole Bills. There were the two there that were introduced in the previous session, but never even got a hearing. But we have talked about looking at that language. Of course, I won't staff everybody to say, is this the appropriate language for us as a starting point for the city of Greenville? And then we've talked about going to meet with the powers that be, particularly the county association, who's killed this for thirty years.
We Ted and I, Ted, you and I have had conversations with Josh and the gang over at the county. And I think the approach, the prior approach with the language in the legislation probably caused immediate opposition from the county. And I said to Josh, look, you know, instead of just throwing bills out there, why don't we get together in the interim and talk about what we actually instead of doing a a macro level Donut Hole bill to really narrow it down to say, what are we really trying to accomplish?
Exactly.
And what are some of the parameters that we can put around that'll make you, the counties, comfortable with being able to support legislation that would give us a little more freedom in being able to pull in some of those enclaves? And and they actually were very, I mean, they were, they said, yeah, yeah, absolutely. I think that they were just been on the defensive with some of the legislate. I'm trying to say this nicely.
Yeah. John, what are the, I mean, what's their opposition to the enclaves? I would think that service wise, it would be a nightmare and.
Yeah, so so they're right. Like, so the commentary I've gotten from the county is, you're right, it is confusing when you have these enclaves. It is confusing and the people who are there are confused. The the service providers, emergency police are often, you know, thinking who's going to cover, who's not going to cover. So they totally agree with that.
Is it purely revenue driven?
No, I think I think it's, I don't think Greenville is their concern. I think their concern is maybe some other municipalities who could take advantage of loopholes that are created in the legislation. So that's why I said, let's see how we can make this tighter so that the counties are more comfortable instead of making it bigger. And then they're like, no, no, no. And then they get kind of, you know, freaked out a little bit. They're like, no, no, no.
Yeah.
And so I don't, I don't think they're worried about people like us. I think that, you know, maybe some others out there that they might.
Definitely agree with with your approach and, yeah, it's, to me, it's turf, the usual turf battle and power. And like the municipal capital project sales tag, we got it. We don't want you to have it. And that's our number one issue every time you introduce it, to kill it. And this falls kind of in that. But you but but to take the threat off the table, I think that's the best approach. And you tell me when you guys want to approach them or sit down and look at the language and see, can we do something more unique for the city of Greenville? That tightens it up when you look at these two bills or do we start with this as a base and go to them and say, what would make you more comfortable, put some more parameters in there, but just so we can possibly address this issue in our city.
Through infrastructure. Infrastructure might be a talking point, even though it 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 failed before. Now is probably a much better time to talk because of the concern, as well as we're looking for new revenue for affordable housing. The county is in worse shape than we are in terms of not having adequate enough. So we do need to have a conversation because we shouldn't let that penny sales tax go by.
And Ted, is there any hope for the Municipal Tax Relief Act?
Say again?
Any hope for the Municipal Tax Relief Act?
Uh, not while we're loaded down with.
Not while we're alive?
Cash, yeah. And as I've always said with that one, you bring me Greenville County and get them to sign off and not fight. If we introduce it, that helps us neutralize the county association. But until we have that, it literally becomes their number one.
That's what I thought.
You agree with that? Number one issue that they are not know, but hell.
We had a conversation before the meeting, Ted and I, on an issue we have with transportation and looking for. And I think, John, you and I might have had some conversations about this, looking for money for our 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 needs with G T A that that we have worked hard going after the B I L money. We have, yeah, no, you know, we have been denied. And so we will look for other opportunities, but some of those opportunities are at the state level. And it is not just a transportation issue. It is now an economic development issue.
Of course, yep.
It was not just workforce. It it affects businesses in this county and how well they do. So we'll need a lot of help with that and I'm.
Definitely glad to explore all options and grants or whatever we can find at state level that are applicable. We'll keep moving Greenville County, but if we want to get together, guys, now is a good time on the on the Donut Hole issue. I'd like to start coming together before we sit down with the county.
Yep.
Folks with language.
Okay.
So let's look at those two bills as a base, maybe. Can we? Do we need to?
And maybe what other states do too.
Yeah.
And Ted, we've been working in the last three, four months on engaging more proactively face to face with our legislative delegation.
Good.
Camilla's been a real champion for getting that set up and scheduled, which I greatly appreciate because you're dealing with chasing a lot of cats on that one. So I think we're looking in December, maybe early December for that. And that is a critical meeting for us to come together and and respectfully seek their help. Yeah, good.
And there's a lot of new members of the delegation, which we don't usually have that turn up much turnover, but retirements and a few folks lost in their primaries. So you got about five new members to to get to know and start educating about the city of Greenville would be great. Any way we can help with those events, we're glad to. We do that all the.
Apparently, we used to do it, but, you know, we we have three new members, but although we're not new anymore, goodness.
When Julie was.
When Julie was here, it was regular and I think that's a good thing. And and have charged the city manager, I don't know where he went, with making sure that comes back.
Yes.
Yeah.
Anyway, highly recommend that. It's good to do. Monitoring administrator, I was going to turn this over to Tara, but I think we're running out of time. We'll just, y'all know what she does. This gives you a good list. We work closely with the municipal association, too. We participate in their weekly call. Strengthen numbers. We try to stay together on on issues. We're fighting for municipalities other than the unique ask for the city of Greenville. So I like to work with them. They got a good staff. And Tara does amazing job with with the weekly Under the Dome. You see the legislative monitoring, she can talk about this a lot better than I can, and the tracking system. But it's all professional. We retain two other monitoring services to cover things we can't cover. Anyway, we we try to cover it all for you guys and have over the years. The legislative calendar for twenty three, most important would be prefiled, probably prefiled legislation. Yeah. In December, the House usually has two prefiled dates. That's when we start getting the flavor of what's going to be introduced, good, bad, or not. And the Senate usually has one some in December also. First day of session, you see, and it's a clean slate, as we talked about, first year for two-year session. So any legislation, usually we say for a client, if if you're going to have something that's going to have some controversy and you want to try to get out there early, maybe the Donut Bill, get it introduced early. And we have a two-year window to try to pass it, you know, if necessary. So that's that's importance of a two-year session. And the crossover deadline is huge. If you need something hadn't crossed over, it takes two thirds to take it up, pretty much kills a bill for the for the year. So for playing defense, we try to keep a bill in committee and not cross over before that date. And then my favorite day is Sunday die Thursday, May eleven, when they leave. And I think that's it. I'd love to hear from you guys on anything else you have.
Well, we need to make sure we put some icing on that Donut Bill.
Did we put what?
No, I'm kidding.
Oh, icing.
And and Tara, the Under the Dome is fantastic.
Thank you.
And we use that a lot. So thank you for doing that.
She has somehow put up with me for over twenty years now. We've worked together and can read each other's minds.
Right.
And Mr. Trotter, I'm sorry, Hobart Trotter is on the team and is also registered, but he had a conflict and could not be here today. But he's also out there for the city as a as a registered lobbyist and eyes and ears of the other part of our team. But he had some scheduled trip to Italy.
Well, I get I get to see Ted on a regular basis and he represents us very well. One of the best of the best down there. So thanks for your work.
Well, I appreciate your help. And John has testified on taking his hat off and and testified as a council member, done a great job on a few bills this past session.
I didn't get hanged too badly.
And we we passed. Is that it? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank y'all both.
Appreciate that. And now we go to our next session.
We got the pavement.
Pavement management.
I thought he's bringing samples.
We can do that. We can do that. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and members of council, pleasure to be here today to give you a quick update on our pavement management program. We've been working on this since really late twenty twenty one.
I have to just pause you and say, cannot wait to sink my teeth into this.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm setting aside the novel for that.
We're looking forward to you doing that.
She's an engineer. Leave her alone.
Uh, we we got started on this in late twenty twenty one. And we were expecting to be here a little earlier in the year to provide this update, but it's taken us a little longer than expected to kind of get the plan finalized. But pleasure to be here today. I want to introduce Nick DePalma, which who you all know. And he's been the our project manager for our program for about the last seven years, I guess. And then we also have Dan Chisholm. Raise your hand, Dan, with a consort engineers. He was the consultant that helped us with the plan, getting our reassessment of our roads done and our plan put together. And Dan brings a wealth of knowledge in the construction engineering and road construction business. So it was a pleasure working with him and roadway asset services was also a sub consultant on the consort team that participated. But we want to give you all a quick update. I know we're a little short on time, so we'll we'll try to be brief. But our last assessment was done in twenty seventeen when we assessed the conditions of all of our roads. And really, it was probably twenty sixteen when we started going, kind of moving our program from a worst first to a a program that had a blended approach of doing kind of preservation and maintenance in in addition to full rehabilitation of our streets. So that's worked out very well for us over the last few years. We've been able to, just with with rising costs of just construction and trying to just find ways to stretch our dollars are further than what we were getting out of them. So I think this this new plan, we've got the assessment done and we we actually developed a seven-year plan. So this is kind of our roadmap to guide our pavement resurfacing program for the next few years. Nick's going to go through the slides, you know, in more detail and kind of show you the high level look at the the analysis that was done, the results. We're pleased to say our our street network overall is in really good condition. Compares very well with national standards for acceptable road condition. We do have a lot of roads that, you know, are one of our major problems is our our roads are just very weathered. It's they've seen a lot of, a lot of time is going by since some of them have seen new asphalt going down. So that's probably the the major issue that we're facing with our roads. But overall, our system is in pretty good shape. We've got some recommendations of of options that we think can can help us expand our, improve the system and and try to maximize our dollars. Basically, what this this plan does is kind of, it tries to take an approach of keeping our good roads in good condition while still addressing the the roads that are maybe in bad condition that need a little more rehab or or. while still addressing, um, the, the roads that are maybe in bad condition that need a little more rehab or, or, um, you know, full re, reconstruction. So I think we've got a pretty good optimized approach, uh, using the budget to go towards that. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Nick and let him kind of run through it. And the report that he just handed out is the final report. It, it gives you a little more information on the, um, the detailed analysis and assessment that was done, um, in rating the condition of the streets and shows you some of the high-tech equipment, um, uh, that was used to, to kind of, uh, capture that new condition index that we call it for the street. And then, um, it kind of shows you the real results and it gives recommendations for different types of treatments of how we can, um, improve our overall system. So with that, I'll let Nick.
Nick, I might be jumping the gun, but if I look on page 12 in the report that we have, that we just got, it looks like about, I don't know, it looks like eyeballing it, two thirds of our streets are failed, graded as failed. Is that correct? Should I be worried?
We'll, we'll get to that slide.
Okay.
I'll show you some more information on that. But first I, I just wanted to say.
Start reading ahead.
No worries. I just wanted to say thank y'all for the opportunity to come, uh, give you guys an update on our pavement management program. Uh, I will try to go fast to get us back on time, but if I need to slow down or if you have any questions, feel free to stop me anytime. So this first slide here just kind of reiterates a lot of what Clint already went over. We've got 263, uh, miles and this is city-owned streets. This is not streets in the city. This is city-owned streets. So these are streets that we maintain. That's an 11-mile increase in the last decade approximately. So that's through subdivisions, through new roads, through annexation, whatever it might be. So traditionally we have been getting $1 million per year that comes from the general fund. And we go to the C-Fund Committee for a match of approximately half a million annually. And 2016 is when we started seeing all the movement. Clint and I started working on transitioning our program to kind of stretch our dollars. 2017 was our, our last assessment for this current one. That's when we created the three-year paving plan, updated our website, started increasing awareness via social media. And fast forward to this, this past year, and now we've created a seven-year paving plan. We've got the NIB, which had $9 million approved for resurfacing. $3 million of that went to S C D O T road, what, road, owned roadways, $6 million of which went to city-owned roadways.
Wait a minute. So why are we paying, so we're paying to pave S C D O T roads?
That $3 million was the C-Fund match that we, we did last year.
Okay.
Correct, yes.
The C-Fund match, meaning that we paid $3 million and then we got $3 million?
Correct. It was a $6 million total project.
And that hails, does that, that originates from the penny tax? The C-Fund money?
Yes.
Okay.
So just.
We asked for it, right?
We asked, yes.
D O T had presented a, their resurfacing plan for us, which included no roads in the city of Greenville.
That's right.
Oh, yeah, nothing.
And so we've got roads like, you know, Cleveland Street, uh, McDaniel.
Yeah.
Those Calhoun Street, other roads like that, that we just know D O T has no plan to address these roads at any time.
Okay.
In the future. So, uh, the CTC is very, uh, favorable towards a port. They are required by law to spend a certain portion of their funds on D O T roads. So we knew it would be, um, you know, well-received. We've got, um, this is part of the NIB fund, so a lot of these D O T roads run right through the heart of our neighborhood. So, um, the average citizen doesn't, doesn't know and doesn't really care who owns the road. They just want it fixed. So that was our, uh, reasoning for, uh, going there. We were very pleased to get the 50/50 match on the $6 million program.
So just real quick to, to back up a little bit, to, to give you guys some more information on what we've been doing. So this is a pavement preservation. This is kind of a, a explanation of why do we do preservation? Why are we trying to extend our dollars? Why aren't we just doing mill and fill on every road? And I go back to pretty much the same metaphor I, I use constantly. So if you've heard it before, forgive me, but it's similar to your car. You get an oil change every so often. You don't just drive your car until it just stops working and then go pay thousands of dollars to get whatever it is fixed. So it's, it's similar to that. A little bit of money upfront saves you from a lot more money down the road. So right now I'll go through some of the treatments that we've either used in the past or are planning to use. Most of them we've used in some way up till now. We've got one pilot program in the works to try to get some more tools for our paving toolbox. So the first one up front is rejuvenator. So this is an application that we've been doing towards the, um, beginning of a pavement's life. So within the first four years of paving, it's just a liquid rejuvenator treatment. It keeps, basically it helps the asphalt, um, from oxidation or other weathering. It gives us four to five extra years on the life. It's very cheap to apply. It sprays on, you can put traffic on it almost immediately. It's a very easy and good application to extend life of our roads. The second one we have not done as a city project, S C D O T has used a lot of this in the past. Surface pressure, preservation somewhat, uh, has a, a large umbrella. So it can be lots of different types of treatments, crack seals, micro surface, scrub seals. You've probably heard of those before. We have not done one in the city. If you look in your plan, we have a pilot program in year two to start exploring some of these treatments. These are pretty good treatments. They, they, they're very thin, usually a quarter of an inch at most. So they go on, they preserve the road, they keep moisture from getting in, uh, they help extend the life of the pavement. But they don't help structurally. So they're not going to fill ruts, they're not going to, um, you know, fix patches or anything like that. Home place recycling. So if you, if you remember, this is what we, we launched a pilot on this in, I want to say 2020. Uh, we actually won a APWA award for this one. So this is where we actually go in and recycle the top inch of asphalt, put it back down and then put a new layer on top of that. So this is a pretty good, quick process. It all gets done in one pass. Um, it was, it was a very successful pilot program for us.
Is this where you see the fire? Under the?
Yes, this is, this is that one. So Bennett Street.
People were worried that there was a fire.
Yes, but.
There was.
Yes, I, I got, I, I got a few calls, but I will say, uh, I got less calls on that contract than I do on a typical mill and fill. So I, even with the fire, I still got less phone calls overall. Traditional mill and fill, same thing you see every day, two to four inches of asphalt, haul it away, mill it off, haul it away, fill it back in. Full depth reclamation, we've been doing this more, uh, more often in the city. This is where we go in, we take the, you know, anywhere from eight to 12 inches of the subgrade, mix it with cement, put it back down and then put asphalt on top of that. So we're actually fixing the entire subgrade as we do this process. It's a little bit more expensive and obviously lot larger equipment to do such a thing, but it's, it's pretty good, especially when you only have, when you go into a road and you've only got a little bit asphalt on top of a lot of subgrades, especially if the subgrades in bad condition. This is just an overview of everything. I went, just went over all of the different types of treatments, uh, the general cost per square yard of what we're seeing and how far they extend your pavement life. So you'll see a break between surface preservation and home place recycling, where that extension in pavement life jumps way up. And that's because the bottom three treatments all are structural. So they all help structure the pavement, jump up our PCI significantly. And whereas the surface preservation rejuvenator are more just extending the life of the pavement. They're not, um, true, uh, structural benefits to it.
But you would, so between rejuvenator and surface preservation, there's a, a huge difference in the cost to do it. So for, the only reason you would choose surface preservation is if it, if it didn't meet the good enough condition to take the rejuvenator?
Right, so the rejuvenator.
But that's, that's our first point of attack to do the rejuvenator.
First four years of a pavement's life rejuvenator. After that, it, the rejuvenator doesn't really, it, it can't.
But for example, uh, for roads that have been recently repaved, well, let me ask you this. When the, if, if a road is being paved right now, would it automatically get a rejuvenator coating on it?
Within the first four years I've been trying to do.
Okay.
Yes. At the last, I would say the last five years, I've done a pretty good job of hitting every road that we have paved.
If we put rejuvenator, if we rejuvenate a road and you said it extends the life four to five years, in those four to five years, are we looking at another rejuvenation or are we looking at having to do something different?
You can rejuvenate a ru- road, uh, two years after you've just rejuvenated it. We have not been doing that. We have been seeing good enough results with just one application. Typically after that four years, you would.
Yeah, once that four years.
Once that four years is gone, you would, you would be in your surface preservation category if you wanted to do something. So you, you might be landing in crack seal and fog seal or micro surface or something like that. But usually after four years, the roads, it, it's not going to react well and penetrate as well as it would in the first four years. So this, this is a good slide, um, that was, uh, given to us by, uh, R A S, who, um, Dan worked with to complete our seven-year plan and collect all of our ratings. So the, the things I want to kind of call attention to, one, one to your question is most of our roads are in the fair and satisfactory category. That's good news. If you look at our survey network average condition up there, um, our average condition is a 70 and our backlog is a 4.8. A backlog is the percent of roads in your network that have to be reconstructed in some way to fix them. They can't just be milling filled or covered. So industry standards typically we're looking at nationally. You want to aim for 70, which we're right there. And for backlog, you want to be between 10 and 15%, which we're actually doing really good on our backlog. So we're in really good shape on our backlog and we're right where we want to be on PCI. So if you can see this very well, I will, I will try to simplify this for time. If you have any questions, feel free to, to stop me. So that green line that's called the, the Greenville budget. So these are annualized budgets, including our NIB money. So the NIB money is a one-time surplus, but we just annualized it over the seven years to make it, make a little bit more sense on a graphical standard. So that green line, you'll see that we have a jump with the NIB money. But if we continue after the NIB runs out, we presumed that we would go back to our million from the general fund and our half million from C-Fund, so a million and a half per year. If we, we continue with that budget, in seven years, our PCI will go down to about a 66.
Can, do you, have you quantified what it would take to continue?
Okay. Yes.
Sorry.
That is the blue line. So the, the blue line is our steady state PCI. So that's to, sorry, yes, that's to keep it where we are at 70 right now. And I'm going to go ahead and jump to the.
But that annual budget would be two and a half million and change is what that's saying.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And we've been doing a million?
We've been doing a million with, with a half million from C-Funds. Just the last thing on this slide I'll point out is a fix-all number of 61 million to, to get all of our roads repaved. Just, that's just to give you an idea of.
61?
61, just to give you an idea of what our network is worth. That's, um, that's it. So future planning.
Today's prices.
Today's prices. So in 2017, our PCI was actually a 74. So we actually were projected, if, if we did a presentation then, we actually projected that at this time we would be a 68. So we've actually done a little bit better than we projected. We've, we've got a 70. So we, we, we were making some good progress in our program. But now we're, we're at a 70 and we've got to make a plan for what are we going to do once the NIB funds are out? So if, if you remember that green line was assuming that we go back to one and a half million, that results in the 66. So if you look at our budget options for desired PCI results in the same timeframe, if you want to hit a specific PCI number, that's what our annual budget would need to be to hit that PCI number. And if you'll, if you'll notice, I am including the C-Funds. I don't think that annual match program is going to go away anytime soon. So I am including that in the figure. So from the, what you would see from the general fund is an additional million. So, so 1 million, it would be 2 million from the general fund in that first 70 PCI number.
So if we move that, cities that are like us, like sort of our size, you know, lot of smart. Exactly.
Well, it's really who has, that has the linear footage we do of roadway.
Yeah. But like cities like us, what, what do we, what do they normally see as far as their PCI? I mean, how do we rank with other cities?
Dan may be a good resource for that. He, he does this for others, but I, I do know that when we were going through this process, they, they said that a lot of other cities are in the lower 60s and they're trying to figure out what they can do to get up to 70. Do you have any, any specific?
Can you go into the microphone?
Apologize. But Greenville is actually in a really good position from a pavement condition index, a PCI perspective compared to other cities our size. You know, as Nick pointed out, uh, nationally, they're probably in the mid 60s, mid to upper 60s. We're at 70 right now. So we've done really good with what we've done in the past. But a lot of the other cities are, as you indicated, spending more money, you know, than we are. And the $2 million budget from other cities our size is probably average to a little bit below average.
Have we kept that million at a million plus the 500 C-Funds? I mean, has that been at a million for how many years? Since 2017? Here comes Matt.
We increased it from 500,000 to a million in FY 15 and have kept it since FY 15.
All right, and I'm sorry, in which year?
FY 15.
So since, so for the last seven, we've had it at the million. Sit, sit close, Matt.
I don't want to move too far ahead, but, but if we were to go to a, and I mean, I said these PCI seem sort of, just like sort of random numbers to me. I mean, I don't, I don't have a real normative, normative scale to, in my mind to, to say, oh my God, yeah, we need to be, you know, whatever. But, but let's say we were trying to go to a 75 and we decided to put 4.35 million in our budget. Where could that come from?
So, um, using my crystal ball a little bit, looking ahead to this time next year, uh, we could probably get half of that from new growth, just organic growth in the general fund. The other half would have to come from either revenue enhancement or savings from elsewhere in the budget.
But that's all funded by general fund?
Yes.
What you think we could do from going here and we could certainly do 2.5 just from growth?
Yes, so, um, the, if we, if we follow the PCI 70 budget, um, that includes about three years of us not funding the million dollars per year. Because as you recall, we, we sort of captured that money to do the bond repayment on the NIB. But it would give us a few years to, to grow back to where we can afford that million dollars a year. If we were out, you know, three years from now, um, then yes, we could probably accommodate that 2.5 million a year.
All right, and then 4.35, we'd be looking at some growth and then we'd also have to do some sort of revenue.
Either revenue enhancement, expenditure cut or com- combination.
Take it from somewhere else.
Yes, saving, overrides of the, of the savings from other construction that we didn't do.
Thanks, sir.
I will say I think C-Funds are a good option for us to continue to build that relationship and, and try to, uh, get additional funding from there. We're, we're turning in an application, um, to them and we will be meeting with them this Thursday to see if we can, uh, stretch our municipal match funds.
But how, I mean, if, if our PCI that you guys are calculating is solely our city roads, then how would that raise our PCI?
Well, the municipal match program that they offer, um, is just for city streets.
For city streets.
That is a program they began, dedicated to the municipalities.
Okay.
And then Nick mentioned the pilot project we're looking at doing with the surface preservation. I think that's a, a really good, um, treatment that we need to, to consider. We're going to test it out, um, and, and hopefully we'll have good success with it. But that'll be another way just to stretch our dollars further and touch more streets with the current budgets that we're operating.
But I'm, something else is, that's going to tax our budget. Stop me if I'm wrong, but as we take back streets or attempt to take back streets, once they've been, first of all, in an annexation, or, uh, at the agreement of the county, and we're, we're pretty sharp on not taking back a road until it's been repaved or in good condition. That adds to our footage. So do you, you know, do you have a feel for how much to escalate our linear footage over time? Taking into account the fact that we are gaining roads through. Taking into account the fact that we are gaining roads through annexation and through take backs when allowed?
I mean, we've seen our network expand about 10, 11 miles over the last 10 years. So it hasn't been growing very fast, but Shannon and her group are doing a really good job in annexations.
Have you looked at it tonight?
Yeah, we've got several more tonight. So, and I mean, we're, our network's not expanding rapidly, but it does need to be considered.
Okay.
Okay, you know, it's 10 minutes after. So, okay, can Nick?
We're almost there. The main takeaway from this slide is that NIB money basically allowed us to hit 33% of the network in the next seven years. So 33% of roads in the city limits will be touched in the next seven years. But thanks to the NIB, which has been fantastic news for us.
Thank you.
And the last slide is just an example. So if you want to, if you're in the appendix in your report up there, this is just me showing you an example of, of how to read that slide. It's color-coded and listed out by year. So you can look at the treatment, look at the road, look at a year and figure out exactly what's going to happen on what road. There's also other appendices in there where you can look by year. And then appendix A is actually, it'll tell you the PCI of every road. And then if that road is getting a treatment and what year that would be. So it has, appendix A has every road in the city, its PCI, and when it, when it would be touched if it's in the seven-year.
So if you've got, you're in here, you got a treatment listed next to it, you're on, you're in.
Right.
What, and I guess since this is a public forum, like we can notify our people who are, who have emailed us. When my road's getting repaved, I can.
Yes, we're teed up with Beth's team to update the website within the next day or so with, with all of this information.
Awesome. Okay. Good news.
This, this is something we hear about at least every week from a constituent. This in addition to traffic concerns. I mean, I'm a little embarrassed. I didn't know we had a website for this. Didn't know we had a plan. Nice to know. Good that it's being communicated now.
And the process is actually have, there's a vehicle with a little camera or something that's able to, and it drives all of our roads and takes in all the data. And then you can compile that. So instead of us up here dictating which gets, roads get paved, you take it out of our hands thankfully. And it goes in the engineer's hands and you rank them and you make your decisions.
It's actually a computer software.
This is on the second or third phase.
Yes, that's it. So it, it measures the.
Have you seen them?
It, it measures the width and length of cracks. It measures, measures the percent of patching on the road. It measures the utility cuts. It measures the rutting. It measures everything. And it compiles it and processes it and gets you a.
You know, I think the, you know, everybody thinks their road is the worst, worst road in Greenville unless they just had it repaved. And this equipment and the data you gather make it subjective, excuse me, objective instead of subjective, which is so important. You know, I wish we could repave them all.
Close the door, please.
But, you know, we have to have a methodology and data to drive us when we're spending this kind of money on paving. So appreciate the.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Elaboration on it.
We appreciate the time. Thank you.
We thank you, etc. I just didn't want that noise outside to knock us all out, etc. But anybody else have any other questions, call them or email them. I'm just kidding. But we, 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 great job, Nick. Thank you so much. And we appreciate you being here as well. Okay, we have, uh, an executive session on code 30-40-70. And we're going to have our lead to give us update.
Yes, ma'am. It's Boards and Commissions, which is authorized for executive session under code subsection 30-4-70-8-1. So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Move proper step of all the favors.
Aye.
Okay, all right. Anyone to close, I guess.